All right, we're calling the order.
Yeah, they won't.
Ellisville Town Council Meeting for Monday, August 22, 2022.
Wait a minute, just one minute. I gotta start that meeting.
Okay. I thought it was already started.
Kevin, can you go over there to that? Just stop, stop recording. Maybe, no, this mouse.
Where is it at?
At the top there. It says it paused. Yeah. Recording in progress. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, who would like to do the pledge this? Jimmy, you want to do both? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Marshall.
Hare, my father, we come before you this evening. And again, we thank you so much for this little town we serve. We ask you to be with these board members as they make the decisions that make this place a better place to live. We ask that you be with all us, leading guide our thoughts, our conversations, and we ask you to say it in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
All right, Sandy, a roll call.
And I just want to make a request before we start the meeting. Make sure that your mic lights are on when you talk and that you're close enough to your mic, because last cats, they couldn't hear at all, so.
Okay.
Thank you. William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Dan Swafford?
Here.
All right. Approval of minutes for the regular meeting, August 8th, Budget Workshop, August 10th, and the work session, August 15, 2022.
So moved.
Second. Andy?
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll.
So moved. Jacket.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Resolution 12-2022, Transfer Funds Police Department. Jimmy, is this yours?
This is just normal end-of-the-year type transfers that we run by in one line and move into another. So we'll have a few more of those coming up here next month or something. So, thank you.
Any council questions or action?
You ready for action?
Yeah.
Move we pass Resolution 12-2022, Transfer Funds for the Police Department.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Resolution 13-2022, To Donate a Vehicle.
That would be me. The town of Gosport's EMS vehicle has, basically, it's not a safe vehicle. And so they've taken it out of service. The fire chief reached out and asked if the old Explorer that we have that we were going to put up for bid, if that could be donated to them. It's a total volunteer department. They also take care of Wayne, Harrison, and Montgomery Township. So they actually have a very large area. It's an '07 Ford Explorer. We've got our good out of it, so it ought to make them a decent vehicle for a few years, anyway.
Okay. Any council comments? Anything from the public? Right, council action?
Move approval of Resolution 13-2022, To Donate a Vehicle to Gosport.
Second. William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ordinance is on first reading. Ordinance 2022-10, To Create a Non-Reverting Fund for the Parks Department. You Darla?
I can. This is an ordinance I put together after the, I listened to council comments at the work session last Monday and after I reread the minutes for the last town council meeting. So I understand there may be some changes some of the town council members may want to make, but this is what I came up with. So basically, what this says is that the fund that the town council established in 1998 for the Department of Parks and Rec is now going to be renamed, and the purpose is going to be expanded to include not only donations, but any other funds for non-capital improvements. So it's a non-reverting operating fund. So that's the purpose of this. I understand there's some question about Section 3 at the bottom, who the director's going to be. Does the council want a director? But otherwise, I think the ordinance should comport with the comments I heard at the work session and at the last town council meeting.
Okay, council comments?
Darla, can we replace Director of Town of Ellisville Parks and Recreation with the town manager or his or her appointee? Because I don't think we need a or want a director of parks currently. I mean, he can always appoint to whoever he wants the job of doing that.
And you for sure want that to read instead of the Parks Board?
Well, because the Parks Board doesn't meet often enough. I mean, I guess they could appoint someone, but I was just trying to think of somebody who's here all the time.
Okay, but the town manager could appoint someone from the Parks Board to do it? So the town manager or his appointee, you're not excluding any member of the Parks Board?
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
And this is just charged, they'd be in charge of collection, not spending, correct? Well?
Out of this fund, both.
Correct.
Out of this fund, it's just the receiving.
Right, okay.
I don't know. What do you mean it's just receiving?
Well, the way she's got this written, if I have read it correctly, and Darla helped me out, that this is for reception only, not able to spend out of that fund. We would have to do a separate ordinance and/or some other motion.
In Section 3, it says receipts and any disbursements.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'm also confused that.
Okay.
Well, I misunderstood, I guess I misunderstood Scott's question, that this, the purpose of this account is to accept funds, and you can only use it for what's designated in this ordinance. So I guess, yeah, it is, you can disperse money from it, but it's limited to what specifically in this ordinance. So the purpose of collecting the funds is limited to what's written here. And the purposes for which it can be spent is limited to what's written here. I may have just made it worse, but anyway.
Dan, did you have a?
Well, kind of, why are we creating this? I really don't understand why we want a non-reverting, or a fund right now that doesn't go back into the general fund. I mean, because we don't have any things that are listed here except for, you know, the shelter houses and stuff like that. I mean, when we get donations, they usually earmark those for a specific thing, anyway. So I guess I don't understand why we're going with a non-reverting fund as of right now.
I thought the purpose of this ordinance was to collect the funds for the youth sports league.
But we haven't decided on that yet, so.
True, but I was, I was asked, I was asked to do this, so yes, you can change it however you want.
And even if we don't proceed with the youth sports league, this fund would still be there for the parks to use and collect for the shelter house money or if somebody wanted to make a $10,000 donation, dollar donation.
Sandy and I, Sandy pointed out to me that the town had already, as I said, established a fund, but it was just kind of a bare-bones ordinance that just said, "We're collecting money for donations," or "We're just collecting donations." And given that it's been 20 years since that ordinance was enacted, the purpose of this was to revise it, make it a little more current for the purposes.
We also changed it to a non-reverting fund, correct?
It was a non-reverting fund already, and it was just isolated for park donations. And we had, right now, there is one donation in there of $250. And I deposited the shelter house deposits and sales tax into this, because those need to go in and out. I didn't want to use an appropriated fund. We have, we have to pay sales tax on the rental fees of the shelter house. It's a state requirement.
Hmm. So really?
We incorporate that in the fee. We don't charge extra for it.
The existing fund we have now is, would be okay unless we decide to go with the youth league, correct?
Well, you probably did want to expand it a little bit, because as I said, the other one was just a bare-bones one. The clerk treasurer is hereby ordered to create a separate fund to receive monies from contributions, which shall be used for maintenance and improvement. So if you want to expand it and not have to worry about it later and change it later, you might want to include language to say program fees, donations, and sponsor contributions in case you get corporate sponsors for some reason.
Being on the first reading, we don't need council action on this.
How should I change it for the next meeting? Or do you want to think about it?
Darla, I do think there needs to be at the very end a little exclaimer that if this would ever be dissolved, you're supposed to say what would happen to the money, and I would assume you'd want it to go to the Park Board account into the Park Board fund if it was ever dissolved. The likelihood of that is slim, I know, but that I think is a requirement that we have to, just to.
Come on here, here, check something. Darla, did this ordinance address the Parks Board ability to bond?
No, it doesn't.
Can it be addressed in it? Can we, can, I say we, can the Parks Board give up that, what am I trying to say, right to bond? I mean, I, it's very, and like Sandy said about slam, that this, it's super slam that our Parks Board would ever try to do that. But I understand that was a concern, and I'd be willing to present that to the Parks Board if, if you want to put that in there.
I can think about how to do that, yes, either as part of this ordinance or a separate ordinance or.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess with Section 3, I would, you know, just, this is my thoughts, this is just one out of five, is that I'd rather that we be the designee of, or designator of who is the responsible for receiving and disbursements. We may make it the town manager, I'm not saying we wouldn't.
Well, the only reason I had it's town managers, because again, it would have to be situational. If that person wasn't here that day, then someone else would have to be his designee. So you may have to have one or two people. They're out sick, they have COVID, they're on vacation.
That's interesting.
Because he's here daily, operationally, or not. We would have to have a special meeting, and she'd have money sitting in her office undeposited past the 48-hour window.
Yeah, I couldn't do that.
Yeah.
But this is a different fund line than the regular budget, correct?
Yeah, non-reverting fund means there's no tax dollars going in there. It's just money from miscellaneous things, whatever you guys decide, and it will stay there to be used as needed, but it won't require appropriation or state approval. It'll just be approved by you.
But how often would that even arise, that they would need funding for anything at spur of the moment?
It'll be incorporated in your accounts payable vouchers, just like any other money. I mean, the fire department has a non-reverting fund.
Talking about deposits. She has a 40-hour window. By state law, we have to deposit.
Right.
And this talks about who can deposit them.
Oh, I thought you said about disbursements, who?
This talks about deposits.
And disbursements, I'm assuming, like Scott had mentioned earlier, if we have, it'll be like its own department, and they'll just bring me their bills, like a department head would, and then I'll just issue a check. And that, I mean, the balances of this will be in the, I'm not sure if it's in your financials, I'll have to look at that, but the cash balance will always be in your cash balances that I give you every month.
So how much is in there right now in the old fund?
$250.
$250? Lot of work for $250 bucks.
Well, I mean, we created a long time ago. It's just sitting there, so it's, we've kind of forgotten about that contribution, so we need to put that to work on something for the park. And there might be a little bit of deposit in there from the shelter house. We refund those after we get notice that, from the street department, that they left it in good shape and who's refund their deposit, and we pay the sales tax monthly. So those are just cash in and outs.
But this also alerts us that we have this fund, and so if the Parks Department or somebody wants to donate, they know that if they want to write a check, it's going to go for the parks.
But that's what it was doing anyway, right?
But we didn't know it existed.
Right.
As am I, and the public didn't know it exists.
It's good to, I mean, it's, and they know that it's something we can grow through donations, which would be phenomenal.
The donation that we have in there was when we were talking about the playground equipment. Someone donated for that.
Right, because usually when they donate, they earmark it for something, anyway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't see any change in there at all. And then Scott, you were saying something about the town manager having authority to deposit? Is that what you were saying?
So let's explain this again. What we're trying to do is create the ability for whoever's here that Mike wants to have deposit the money, deposit the money. So we make it the town manager or his designee or appointee, however you want to say it. That way, it's not lumping it onto Sandy, and it, that way, it can change. I mean, clearly, he'll have a point person to do it, but that point person may be gone on vacation, or they may be sick, or take your pick of any number of things. And as Sandy said, we can't hold dollars in-house for more than 48 hours before they get deposited. So to leave that at the town board, well, we can't even meet for 48 hours.
Right.
Well, and like if they, if there is money brought to my window, and they say this is for the Parks Board, and this is what it's for, they just need to give me the money, I'll give them a receipt and put it in this fund. So, I mean, just about anyone in their, that's in that group could bring money to the window.
They could, but right now, it says Director of Parks, so we're trying to avoid something, because during our work session, you specifically said you didn't want to do it. So that's why we're trying to take it outside of where it's hindering your operations and giving Mike a little leeway to appoint someone to do it. I mean, we're just trying to check all the boxes here, guys.
Okay, so you're going back to the youth program? Okay, I, I got you now.
I'm going back to the perspective of the youth program, yes, and I'm advocating strongly for the youth program.
Right.
But it could be anything.
It could be.
I mean, if somebody wants to sponsor a bench for one of the parks, I mean, that, that's something that would, would come into this.
I mean, quite frankly, Sandy, if you're comfortable having this back on you, we can move it that way. But again, I was trying to structure it in a manner that was consistent with your wishes during our work session.
Well, and I have, I think that it'll be fine. I, I was resistant because I didn't understand everything. And I think if you, at the work session, you talked about them having their own, what was the word? F, associates or?
Oh, well, you're talking about like a subcommittee?
Yeah.
With advisors?
Advisory committee, yeah. I feel like they will probably handle a lot of the ins and outs of the group, and then whoever can bring the deposits to me. I mean, I'll have to, just, it'll go in the same checking account with our general fund, just be denoted by.
As long as you're fine with it, that makes it easier, so I would draw that and would place the town clerk there in place of the town manager. Or his or her designee.
That's fine.
But I do like the different language specifying a little more detail in Part 2. I like, I mean, I like that, so. Then compared to the original language you'd read. Because wasn't the original language kind of vague, Darla?
Right, it was, as I said, it was, it was a bare-bones type of ordinance that was done in 2000.
Was this '11 or '03 that we did?
2003.
2003.
It's been a bit.
Do you have a copy of that ordinance?
Darla does, I think. It's pretty generic, she pretty well read it. It's one I wrote years ago. Dave Serkody was president of council at the time.
Just to get it off the ground and rolling. Now it's time to do a little touch-up.
So in essence, we really have a non-reverting fund in place that we could use until?
We're just modifying the language to.
Right. And bringing it more to the public's attention that if you want to write some checks to help with our Parks Department, then we can take them. What's that?
We move on, or we come to this still?
Is there any more, I mean, because we're not, this is a first reading, so. I mean, Darla, are you kind of understanding what? And has the council got a consensus of Section 3?
Move it back to the clerk.
As long as she's good with it, it makes sense.
I think so.
Yep.
Dan, Pam?
I'm sorry, what? I'm all right.
Good.
Pam, do you have any comments? Okay. And I think we put it on second reading for next meeting. All right. Ordinance is on second reading. Ordinance 2022-08, To Modify Water Rates Deleting the Utility Receipt Tax.
This ordinance has now been modified to include the water tracking factor of 85 cents per 1,000 gallons, which the town of Ellisville pays because it purchases its water from the City of Bloomington Utilities. And the ordinance draft that you saw at the last meeting said that the new rates were subject to. Now the rates include the water tracking factor, so when this ordinance is published online in American Publishing and utilities customers look at it, they'll know exactly what they're paying. They won't have to sit and add on or calculate the tracking factor to figure out what their rate is. And I think Sandy passed around the charter, the information from Baker Tilly that they put together as part of their petition to the IURC, so that it has the current rates with the tracking factor and without the tracking factor.
You said this should be published on the website. Does it need to be in the newspaper?
Um.
Okay.
No.
Any council comments on this? Any public comment? Okay, back to council action.
Move passage of ordinance 2022-08, Schedule of Water Rates and Charges to Decrease Rates from Limitation of House Enrolled Act 1002, Repealing the Utility Receipts Tax.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, ordinance 2022-09, Certifying Ward Boundaries. I think Darla, you had an update on this?
Yes, I would ask that the town council table this, because I am still working on this with Karen Wheeler and one of the county attorneys. We're trying to parse through the statute that discusses certifying your current boundaries, so.
Darla, a quick question on this. Is there any way to, I don't know how to easily do it, so I apologize ahead of time.
That's okay.
To look at what's being built in the current wards and try and estimate what the population increase would be based upon that?
I think that's what Kevin did, wasn't it? Yeah, he looked at the annexations and looked at the, the results of the 2020 census. And the issue was, there's certainly been some changes in the wards for you, Pam, and Dan. Trevor and William stayed the same, but the question is whether or not it was more than a 10% difference. And I think that's where the issue is.
Forgive me, because I don't know whether it's Pam or me, because our minds
Right.
don't generate back that far. You're looking at a whole new housing complex where we join up there in the south end to easily be 1,000-plus people. I don't know, I mean, probably not 1,000-plus voters, but if we're just looking at population differences, and I know Dan's got a lot of things going in his area, that could bump those numbers by, you know, 1,000 here, 1,000 there.
So you think there were 1,000 people added as of the last census? Or you're thinking about the future?
Thinking about the future. Because we're not touching the boundaries right now, but we can see it being built, should we anticipate that?
Right. I don't know what to tell you, except that you're, if you're going to change it, you look at the last census.
Okay.
And I don't know that there's anything under the statute that allows you to change the ward boundaries based on some anticipatory population change. It's strictly based on what the last census was.
I don't think it makes any difference right now, because we all are elected basically at large. I'm trying to think down the line.
Correct. Because you have that hybrid system.
Right.
Okay, council action on this?
I, I got a quick question, too. I, I know you want to table this, but I'm a little confused. We are changing the wards or we are not?
No, it's my understanding you want to recertify them as they are currently.
On this map, why does it say ward change 2022 in the checkerboard area? That's what confused me on the map here.
I think what you're looking at, and that's part of the confusion, I think we need to do a new map. I think what Kevin was trying to show is, based on the 2020 census, those were the changes. So if you were going to change the wards, those would be the changes that would be done. However, if there's less than a 10% difference between the 2010 census and the 2020, you can just recertify the old ward boundaries, if that makes any sense. I understand what you're saying about the chart being confusing, so we'll try to fix that, so you don't have the hash marks or the hatchmark showing the changes, because I think that's what the election division in the clerk's office and I are having trouble with. Trying to explain that to a normal person.
Yeah, I seen there were three different maps that was circulated in email.
Right.
And one was a current.
Right.
And then the changes that Kevin was making, that's why I was confused, because if we were recertifying, we would go by the current wards and not this checkerboard part. So, yeah, I think the other, or a map in this would help me out a lot.
I think this is the current wards, he just showed the
If he was gonna change.
Potential changes.
Right. So in other words, we need to do a new map and get rid of the potential changes.
Yes.
Because if you take, if you take it and just put over it, what the clerk's office, the Monroe County Clerk's Office has now for your wards, they're identical. So you have to get rid of that proposed change.
But the, the boundaries for the wards aren't done on, based on a visual map, they're based on legal descriptions of this street and that street, correct? I mean, maps not what? Well, yeah, they go by precincts.
Census blocks, no, not precincts.
Yeah, it's done by census blocks. And when you did it the last time, and Sandy's gonna have to remind me who did it, Elevate, they did it by census blocks.
Okay.
And that's what Kevin
And that's in the current ordinance, right.
Yeah, Kevin had also updated it by census block.
Right, and I just need to revise the ordinance, because there's language in the statute that talks about you can't cross the precinct lines unless A, B, and C occur. And so I need to go back and fluff out the ordinance a little bit and say what's happening, what's not happening. So this passes muster with the clerk's office, because they're the ones who have to look at it. Once you approve the ordinance, Sandy has to send it to the Monroe County Clerk's Office. So I know that's all clear as mud now.
Well, I guess I'll make a motion to table this ordinance 2022-09, certify award boundaries.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, old business, seeing none. Flood report. We have some news on that.
We now have all of our permits. To move forward with flood mitigation on Vine Street. I started the process of obtaining some easements today. And I don't think we're gonna have any problems with that. And so I'll be meeting with Christopher Burke, Rep. Andrew Miller. We're gonna talk about the next steps that we need to take to move forward. And I talked to Darrell about putting together some bid packets. And I think I'm gonna check in with Rick Kopic and we'll try to get something together. Maybe we can dig a hole even this year. Probably won't finish, but we might be able to get started. Sure would like to break ground.
Hey, Mike, on that DNR report, was everything we asked for included in the report?
What do you mean by the DNR report?
The, the DNR, the permits they give us to dig or shelving?
Yeah, everything was approved as
Requested.
for our plans through Christopher Burke.
Okay.
Awesome job on that, thank you. Any public comment on that?
Yay!
For the record, Valerie says yay. Alright, Vision Elletsville update. No report on that. So new business, 2023 supplemental files, fire service agreement between the town of Elletsville and Richland Township. So this is you, Kevin?
Yes, this is the contract for next year. And Marty did increase 5% on his contract. So it's the vehicle that he's currently paying for, the equipment line, those remain the same, because those are fixed. But the portion that covers salaries and whatnot, that did increase by 5%. Other than that, there was no other changes in it.
And you're good with it?
Yes.
Council comments?
Did put two copies of that in the blue folder, so that we could each have an original.
Any public comments on this? Seeing none, back to council action.
I move approval of the 2023 supplemental fire service agreement between the town of Elletsville and Richland Township.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, affordable septic and repair request to use Elletsville wastewater for disposal. Who has this? Come on up to the, sign in.
Good evening, Steve Phelps. New owner of Affordable Septic. Affordable Septic's been in business in Bloomington area for about fifteen, twenty years.
Can you make sure that mic is on and you're speaking into it?
It was on earlier.
It was. Okay, it's on, make sure you speak into it clearly.
I reside on 2447 Smith Pike Road, up the road here. I'm here to, to ask. I currently use the Bloomington wastewater treatment plant. When I took over the company, that's who they were using. Since I've been here approximately about a year with the company, I have recognized that you also have a facility, possibly. I believe there's a few haulers locally that are using the facility. And I'm here to ask if the availability would be there for affordable septic.
Could you speak up a little bit still? Sorry.
It's okay. Is this better?
A lot better.
So I'm here to petition to see if I somehow or another could also use the privilege of, you know, your facility. Doesn't have to be all the time. I realize there's capacities and et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, I don't know what that is, but I think I talked to Mr. Farmer. He had definitely clued me in that volumes and stuff like that change pH levels and et cetera, et cetera. So my rebuttal to that was, is if you are only going to take in a certain amount because of that, is there any way that maybe would be divided up amongst four of us instead of just three of us? Since I'm, you know, fairly close. It's not something I have to use all the time, but the availability would be very nice. Especially since I'm planning on being here a long time.
Jeff?
Well, as you said, we did, we had a couple of conversations. If you'll go back to the last time we had this conversation about septic haulers. I wasn't all that, or I wasn't that, all that willing that we were gonna take on a fourth septic caller. After further review, we voted to say yes, we've taken on that fourth hauler. To be honest with you, as I explained to Mr. Phelps, that, you know, we have never experienced ammonia problems at the wastewater plant since 1907, when it went online. I'm proud to say to this date, twenty-five years later, it's never violated any of its N P D S permits. But in the fall and in the spring, we're starting to see a rise in our ammonia removal limits, or testing. So there's even been a couple of times that we've even thought about maybe cutting back on how much we have dumped at the plant. As you know, we dump at the utility building. It's currently, it's on a, you know, just, you know, I have a trust that these guys are sending me what they, I have to do all the reports that they're sending in. That's how we do our billing for it. The current, the guys that dump here actually pay for our dump fees at the landfill for our sludge. So it's worked out good to this point. I've had other people call and ask. And I directed in the same way, come to the meeting and I ask. I mean, there's Harden and Helms and Awan and Owens, and I mean, I could go on with all the septic callers that are in our county. We can't take them all. This is a, this is, I hate this part of my job, because, you know, he would like to dump, he'd like to have the same courtesy as the other three guys, other four actually, as well as us. You know, it's for me to say, no, I'm doing what I think's right for the plant. But it's not doing right by him or the next guy that gets up here and asks. But at some point, you're gonna have to trust my judgment. I don't, and this is just a tricky situation for me, because we get to dump there. So it's, you know, it's the same conversation we had the last time. Our rates are way cheaper than Bloomington's. As I told you in a few meetings ago, or quite some time ago, those rates are about to really change. Because our company dumps there, I didn't find it right for me to do the rate study, so we're letting Baker Tilly do our rate study. So they're gonna tell us how much we're gonna all pay in the future, not me. Currently in our upgrades at the wastewater plant, we are, one of the things that we're talking about, if you remember, is building a new sophisticated dump station where you swipe your card. There's no more the gentleman's agreement where I have to trust everybody. You're gonna swipe your card, it's gonna track how many gallons that you dump, automatically gets billed, all those things, so we don't have any issues as far as that goes. Bloomington has a 15 million gallon per day plant in the south and a close to 5 million gallon per day plant in the north. That's 20 million gallons they can handle. We have a 2.3 M G D plant, we currently treat about 1.2 million. We're probably taking the most flow of both of those two. In fact, Blue Chip pool plant takes no septic anymore. And the City of Bloomington has really hampered other people that are in the business by closing their doors at five o'clock every night. So they're on eight to five, or whatever their hours are, you probably know better than I do. So they're supposed to be a regional sewer plant. That, you know, people that don't live in the city, they have to have a place to dump their waste. Surrounded communities, I can name them all, that do not accept one gallon of septic sludge. It's hard to treat. It's the dastiest of the waste that comes to your plant. So, again, it's a tricky situation for me. I don't like being in this situation. I, we, we don't really want anymore. We don't want what we've taken on. It used to just be Larry Todd, and we kind of replaced Larry Todd after he passed. We do a lot of your work for free with our septic truck, we're on call 24/7, our service trucks are on call. Yeah, well, all the work, when you need us. So that's a benefit we trade off for being to dump there, and we pay the most by mile. Records are to utility office email, let's see them. So your thoughts, questions, comments?
If I could add something to that, if that's okay?
Sure.
And I, and I understand what Mr. Farmer's saying. You know, volumes and et cetera, et cetera. And I understand that you can only handle so much. Your capacity is only allowed so much. So, you know, one of the thoughts I had to him was, you know, if, to make it fair, if that would be an option, if you're only gonna take in 100,000 a gallons a week, or whatever your number is going to be, could that be divided amongst however many haulers are available to dump here? You know? He is right, there is a, there is a significant change in pricing. The other side of it is, is like on the weekends, the, and I explained to him, which I understand is not his issue, but you're 24/7. So when, when I get a customer that calls on the weekend, if I'm, you know, when Bloomington shuts it down, if I'm loaded, I'm loaded. I can't help my neighbor, anybody around, but those who can dump here can. So I lose the ability to satisfy customers and they have to call somebody else. Which is not really good for business, if I could keep from it. So that was one of the things I was just gonna throw up. Is it something that maybe we could divide amongst however many you're going to allow, or you're not gonna allow? Or, well, you know, maybe the way he's talking, maybe, maybe none of us should be able to come. And that makes it all a playing field for all of us. But right now, I'm kind of at a disadvantage for those who are able to dump here, because on the weekends, you know, you get an emergency call, a lot of times I gotta say, I can't, I'm loaded, sorry. And then I see another truck running down the road and I know I lost it, so. So anyway, I'm just throwing out some ideas. I'd love to have the opportunity, would love to hear what you all think and.
Jeff?
Yes.
I have a question, I guess, for you. One time, correct me if I'm wrong, did you talk about that we're getting like close to our capacity? I mean, like the more we grow?
Yeah, we're not, we're, we're like 65% of our capacity currently this year.
So like, if we keep taking people in other than like our town?
If I'm being honest.
That would hurry it up, speed it up, it's getting us at full capacity, correct?
Well, if I'm being honest, what septic caller springs a drop in the bucket? Compared to what our flows are. But it is added to the capacity. The answer is yes, but I don't want to make it sound like
But it won't speed it up like tremendously or anything?
Not yet.
But they're adding ammonia, whereas the normal process waste does not, or not bring that much to
Heavy amounts. This is untreated sewage that's just sat there for anywhere from one to five to 10 years that gets hauled in.
It doesn't add, add or benefit the sewer plant in the process, is that correct?
Not, not, not at all. The only benefit that we're getting is, we are, I mean, we're taking in the, the money that's coming in is really helping pay for the sludge disposal for everybody in Elletsville. And it will, it'll get tremendously better as soon as our rates change by quite a bit. I plan on taking that money, using it to build a new dump station that can de-rag the stuff, can get the grid out of it, monitor the flows. All those things are coming in the future and we'll make it more beneficial to us. I mean, you know, it's just more than the waste, it's, it's the, we, we stopped up the other day, a septic caller dumped, and we were stopped up for a day and a half, because they brought stuff from, from a state park that was full of, trying not to be too gross, but people taking their dog droppings in plastic bags and throwing them in, in the outhouses. And it took us a day and a half to get it applied. So it, you know, any septic caller's not bringing you anything, you know, that you really want, but it's better than taking, taking, and this is my heartburn with City of Bloomington, is their staff 24/7. And when I worked there, we took septic callers 24/7, that's a long time ago. But, because if they can't find a place to dump it, where are they gonna dump it? And, you know, you always hear the horror stories of where it goes, and it's not where you want it to go. So, you know, that's, that's the quandary that I'm faced with. But I'm telling you, the town of Elletsville cannot continue to take on more and more septic callers. We just, well, at some point, nobody will be dumping there, and we'll be back to just domestic waste. Somebody, I told, I told Mr. Phelps that if somebody, you know, drops off, which probably is not gonna happen, then yeah, you know, I would entertain it. I would, I'd be a, you know, encourage the board that, you know, maybe we could take another person. Just, I don't want, because of the convenience, and just to touch on the convenience a little bit, they all do have keys. You know, I live in town, I don't see, I don't see them in there on the weekends that often. I'm sure there's an emergency dump in there too. But it is a convenience that they have, they have a key to the gate, so they can dump. But, you know, so. How about, yeah, thoughts, questions?
What's the rate we charge? Do you know?
Four dollars a thousand for septic and thirty dollars a thousand for digested sludge.
And what's Bloomington charge?
I don't know.
Sir, do you know?
It's, it's about eight.
How much?
About eight.
I thought it was more than that.
I'd have to double check my, because it's based on your truck. It's a flat rate for your truck.
I think, I thought it was more like 12, 15 bucks a thousand, but I must be wrong.
What's a truck hold?
Anywhere from, most of trucks in this area are 2,500 gallons to 5,000.
I mean, Jeff, if we limited it to hypothetically, I mean, I don't know if we'd need to do this by ordinance or whatever with a certain amount of carriers. I mean, would that help you? What number would you prefer that, or a certain amount of? I mean, how? Because whether we approve or deny this one, six months, a year from now, we'll probably have somebody else here asking the same question. What can we do to say this is what our policy is? I mean.
I mean, you can do whatever you want. You can say yes to, you can say, we're not taking any more, you can say, yeah, we're gonna take all that wanna come, you can do whatever you want. I mean, as a board, you can choose that number. The other current problem we got is, again, we knew, we knew, we know the other three. The one, the one is the son of Mr. Todd, been around us for a long time. And the other two are local men that are well-known in the community. And they have keys to our gate, the blue building. You know, when do I stop handing out keys to people? I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, this is, I mean, this is, you know, I knew
I'm not gonna trust.
what was gonna happen tonight, was this is gonna turn into, okay. Now it's becoming an issue, you know, first it was one guy, and then I was two, and now it's three. And, you know, I keep thinking. It's a, it's a, it's not that I don't not trust this guy, I don't know this guy. And I don't know the guys that drive the other trucks either. I just happen to know the other two, one of them's a fireman, and the other one's been in our community for a long, long time, so.
So how long do you have this other basin built, or whatever you were just talking about?
Yeah, yesterday, but it hasn't happened yet, because we have so many other things going on that are
Two, three years, a year?
Oh, no, I hope to have it done by next spring at the latest.
And then it becomes a moot point as to how many you handle, or no?
No, it just means it's, I don't have to worry about who's been in the gate, who had been in the gate. When you swipe in, I'll know you. gate. When you swipe in, I'll know you. Right now, I don't know who's in the gate or not. I don't know if it's one of our guys coming on the weekend. I don't know.
Cause of the swiping's happening and you're getting the.
Swiping's gonna tell me who's there and it's gonna tell me how many gallons he's dumped. And all I gotta do is press print and send it to the office and they send out the bill. Right now, they're sending me a, a spreadsheet that says I dumped three times this day and two this day and this day. And I have to put it into a billing and send it to, um, I don't think one person's cheated me yet, to be honest. But, cause they know for four bucks, they don't wanna lose that.
Access.
Access and have to be in this guy's shoes.
Right. Would you feel more comfortable waiting to add anybody on if we do that until you get that system in place? Or does that not make a difference?
That's, yeah, that's an easy yes, but.
Well, I, I think it's, it's a point, Jeff, what I hearing from you, at what point is it fair to the taxpayers who paid for this plant to allow private businesses to bring in from, uh, sludge from, you know, other counties and things like that? And my question would be, is allowing these people to dump really paying for what they're doing and what they're using our facility for?
It is. I can, I'll, I can, I think I tried to show you that the last time we talked about it.
You, you know, but I, I hear that it stopped us up for a day and a half and things like that. So, I mean, are you including man hours and all, all that together?
Everything.
It stopped up the dump station, not our plant.
Right, right. I know what you're saying.
That's one, you know, I'm just, that's just, that's an, that, that's an instant that's going on now because our two dump station right now is homemade and it was put there for one guy.
Yeah. I, I thought you told me several years ago, we had a flow meter on that. I guess we don't?
No. No, I probably told you that that technology's available. And it is available.
Right.
And it's expensive.
It's a tough one. I mean.
It's really tough for me because I see we be playing favorites and that's really not what the plant was built for. I mean, it was built for the residents of the community. Now, I agree, you probably serve some of the customers.
Absolutely.
I mean, my house, it has a, a holding tank, so, but at what point, I mean, do we allow no one or everyone? So.
Quandary.
You know, it, just, just for me to speak openly, I mean, with the availability that you guys allow, like he said, they have keys, et cetera, they can come and go. Um, if they have a weekend service there, you know, they could come if they needed to. Um, and right now the pricing is quite a bit different. Um, so I'm at a disadvantage quite a ways. Um, they can flex their prices quite a bit different than say if a customer calls me, you know, because I'm dumping higher, my expenses are, I gotta beat higher. If they're dumping, you know, here and you're cheaper, then I'm, I'm, I'm not able to compete with them. So if you're in a situation to where you're trying to figure out what you do, I'll just be point blank. I just assume you shut them all off. That way we're all on the same playing field.
See, that's, see, that's, the, the, the cost is not my concern here. This is where he and I have a little trouble. Mike, the cost is not my concern about how much somebody's charging to haul a septic tank. That is not my concern. My concern is the effluent going into the creek. And, uh, you know, i- if, if, if you showed up tonight to say, I get a, I get a player, nobody gets to play, then I got a real problem. Cause I explained to you at length twice what my situation was. And I didn't come in here and say, no, don't let this guy dump. I explained it out the way it was. As soon as you go there, I have a problem because that's not what this is about. Listen, if Bloomington's not gonna take it, somebody, we're doing a service for people outside of our ratepayers, not taxpayers, ratepayers are paying for this plant. And we're doing a service for those people as well. In turn, because of our management style, it's paying for every ounce of sludge that's, and, and you gotta understand, what they're bringing is a drop in the bucket of what the whole community is sending every day. I mean, we're talking about a million gallons a day going to our plant and we maybe get, you know, on a good day, thirty or forty thousand gallons dumped. I'd have to really check to give you a good number. So it's really, and that's a good day and nobody on the weekend. So it's a drop in the bucket, but the, the price they're paying, and I can't wait till they're paying what they really should be paying, as I talked to you about before, ten meetings ago, and, and that's where we're headed, then it will do more than just pay for. It'll help pay for, uh, our contract down there. It'll help pay for, uh, things that we need in the future down there. Once we get the dump fees where they belong.
So Spencer, Martinsville, all the others that are around us, do they accept these trucks as well?
I don't know if Martinsville does, but I, I know, you know, smaller communities like Gosport and, you know, obviously Steinsville don't and South Central Regional Service District head does not have a dump station. Uh, I don't believe, I don't, I don't know if Spencer takes them or not. Do you know?
No, Martinsville doesn't. Spencer, the only people that take it right now is Merrill Brothers in Indianapolis and then Bloomington and then you all. Those are the ones that I'm aware of. I do believe that Bedford has the ability to, but, um, I've reached out to them, but I haven't got.
It's a problem.
Clearly.
It's a problem and, uh, something I've expressed idem about. There should be some limit of reception for every wastewater plant because obviously Southern Indiana is a very rural community. A lot of people are not on, um, not on sanitary sewer systems and, you know, our water's precious to us and we're having problems with algae blooms and all the other stuff. I could go on for hours about in our, our drinking water systems and our underground drinking water systems. And there is, I'd say for every septic system out there that's working right, there's two that isn't failing. And, and, you know, the studies are long and lengthy and, um, Monroe County's really starting to try to turn the tide and everybody gripes about it, but we're trying to protect our waterways. And look around at some of our other out west and some of the places that are, like at Lake Mead, we're running out of water, folks. So I'm just trying to protect our effluent. Again, we haven't filleted in twenty-five years. And I can, I can bring Jeff Pegg in here and, and we can share our conversations about how bad these septic tanks, septic systems, how much are they really hurting, uh, our operation in the spring and the fall? And that's when the weather changes or gets cold, it's harder to night, have night fires work in the, in the wastewater plant. I won't bore you with wastewater one-on-one. Um, my concern's true, a true concern. And, you know, if you say yes tonight, I don't care. I'll live with it.
Where's the line? At five, six?
Oh, no, we need to make one.
Yeah, and I think that's the tough choice. I mean, because we clearly let him, who's gonna stop? They start coming in one at a time, asking to do the.
They've called me. And hey, can we dump over there? We know these guys are dumping over there.
We also don't think it's fair for us to start restricting the people we've been doing business with for years.
I, I'm not saying that.
No, I get it. Just because more and more and more went on.
Right.
So.
And this discussion was on the last one that we allowed, there's a lot of the same discussion went on then, so.
Right.
I'm inclined, I think the council probably needs to put an ordinance to the, a number of how many, and then no one else can be taken on unless one drops off.
In fairness to, uh, Mr. Phelps and the board, I think that you should, uh, table this for tonight. Give me a couple of weeks to try to get you some really good information for you to digest so you can see, I, cause I got, I mean, I keep every gallon and every dollar. So I've got records go all the way back to nineteen ninety-seven when we opened the door, so.
So at Bloomington, is it first come, first served, or they have a list?
I don't, I think you have to, they, listen, they are getting so stringent. They, you now have to be an accepted hauler. Did you go to the meeting?
I did.
And they're making it as tough as possible. The one thing I don't accept is grease traps. Uh, I just don't, we can't, we can't afford to take grease traps. We're not that plant. And they don't want them either. So now, if you're, if you're a business, probably gonna get in trouble for saying some of this stuff, but in the city, uh, you probably have to have grease trap hauled in Indianapolis. Well, that's not, that's not cheap.
And who's to say they don't sneak grease traps in on you anyway?
I mean, yeah.
So we know.
Not, and not, he's not talking about us.
Yeah.
Oh.
I mean, Jeff, would you prefer that if we, I mean, if we tabled this to the next one, but also start having some serious conversations about putting an ordinance with the limit? Would that kinda help you give some better clearer guidance? And that way if somebody comes to you, can say, we're allowed X amount unless someone drops off, we can't take you on?
Yeah.
I mean, is that something you would?
Yeah, because, and I shouldn't put it in, and I'm gonna go back through and do a twelve-month study of how much actually gets dumped and what kind of product it is.
And can you also include a report to us how much we've made in the past two years? And also the cost on upgrading the system that you talked about? Can you get us a cost on that in a couple of weeks or do you need longer?
Uh, I don't know if I can get all that one, but in two weeks. I'm not, you know, I.
I'm happy to give you a month. I mean, I think we, we're good to wait a month. I mean, I know you're wanting an answer today, but this is, you know, this is a serious problem, so.
Um, yeah, it is pretty serious. I think an educated answer is better than an uneducated.
Oh, definitely.
So I think the, the consensus is we wanna at least get the information from Jeff. It's not a no, it's not a yes. Um, not trying to string you along either, but we just need to see some of the data. We don't wanna handicap the town or tell you something and then all of a sudden have to change our mind, which would be worse for you because you're making business decisions.
I completely agree.
So, um, we wanna give it the thought that it deserves.
And also give Jeff a month. I mean, it's not fair to you to have you come back in two weeks and he doesn't have all the information for us. So Jeff, are you good with a month?
Sure.
Actually, it'll be five weeks because our next meeting's three weeks long, so you'll have five weeks. Perfect.
If you, can you reach out to him and let him know when it's on the agenda again? So you don't have to waste your time and.
I will, yes.
Thank you. All right, do we, Darla, do we need council action on this or?
No.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is request to rent the Vine Street properties for U-Haul storage. Who has that? This is CJ Hatton. Don't know CJ Hatton.
I don't know anything about it.
They called my office and.
Yeah, I told her to put it on the agenda because I think it needs to be a discussion from all of us. What they're interested in doing is renting the empty parking lots down there to set U-Hauls in. And, um, I told Sandy, I can't give her an answer, so I want her to put it on the agenda.
I can put it to bed right now.
So you're saying no?
No, yeah, as a risk manager, uh, there's no barricades on the back going into the creek. There's uneven surface and broken surface. Uh, we're gonna probably have people in and out of there looking at it. And once we get documents, they'll be, uh, wanting to, uh, survey the property to decide how much to charge us, to dig it all out. I, I don't think it's worth it. I mean, I, I'd rather do it, I'd rather say yes as a favor if it, if this is a, you know, just a one-time thing and not even.
Charge.
Charge them rent because money's not gonna help us that much. It can't be that much. But I just think from a risk management, we probably ought to say no right off the bat.
Sandy, was it just a temporary thing, was it, or was they wanting to do, you don't remember?
No, it was just a very short phone call and I, I mean, I, was I on the phone with you? I mean, I don't even know how you knew about it, but you heard it.
Yeah, I think.
And, um, but at any rate, I just told him I'd put him on the agenda because that's why.
Yeah, I didn't, I, I saw and I didn't know anything about it, but.
He just said it was temporary while the students are all coming in. They have a influx of trailers and that he just needs to storm. But I'd say that influx is pretty much here already, so.
Yeah. And they're not here, so.
Yep.
And, you know, Mike, you bring up a good point. I've seen some, uh, semi-trailers and stuff parked in there before. Is, do you know anything about that?
I don't. I know they must like it because they do it quite often, but it's not causing a problem. It's one or two trucks. I think it's just one driver, different trucks. And, uh, I just haven't, it's not been a problem.
It's not like we approved it.
No, wait.
Right.
What, what kind of liability, Darla, do we have if something happens on that property?
If they're trespassing, you should have no liability.
But if we gave approval, they wouldn't be trespassing.
That might be an issue.
I, I mean, those trucks haven't been there for about a week. I haven't noticed them. I was there today and there was nobody. So, but I have seen them myself. It's, there is one there tonight.
I think the biggest.
Must got home.
As if.
I was making sure no one gave permission or anything like that.
I think the biggest issue is that something stays there. When we need access to that property, then we're gonna have to go through the rigamarole if we gave permission to say, okay, now you, we have to give you what, thirty days or whatever it is to clear, and it's putting all our plans behind. So.
Well, we'll be putting up fencing and what have you once we start construction.
Please tell them you got laser turrets and stuff too and drones.
No, just.
Do we not appropriate that much money for you?
Now, it'll just probably be smoke fences.
All right, we'll deal with it. All right. Next on the agenda is Drive Clean Indiana Alternate Fuel Audit. Who has this?
I do. Uh, so I've talked to, uh, an organization called Drive Clean Indiana. And, uh, I think one of their main goals is to reduce emissions from, uh, from oil-based, you know, vehicles. And so, uh, they have an organization, it's a coalition, and, uh, they have, they're a liaison and an advocate for, uh, uh, working through the process of converting, uh, fleet vehicles from, uh, gasoline or diesel to propane and, um, electric vehicles. So they call it EV. And, uh, so I've been just, I've been talking to them and we had a meeting with, uh, some of the department heads and kind of talked through it. And, um, you know, I, I'm convinced that in the future we will be looking at EV technology. Um, but right now, if you're really excited about doing it and if you'd like to put some stations up in your community, which I was thinking, hey, that would be a good community service and allow people that's going through town to maybe visit our town. Well, you can get excited about it, but getting a hold of it is a whole different game. It's expensive, it's competitive. And if you, I mean, for instance, if you want forty EV, um, forty, a unit, EV fleet, you might get four and you might get them in two years. And so, um, it's, the technology has promise, but, um, I don't, I don't think we're there yet as a country or especially not a small community like ours. We'd be fighting the big boys and the people with a lot of money. Uh, so I was kind of discouraged, but, um, they also, uh, allow for propane, um, propane-driven fleets. And there, there is some, um, consideration by myself at least that, that might be worth looking at. So, um, it improves emissions and it, it improves, um, uh, the propane burns cleaner. And so your maintenance costs theoretically go down. I'm not completely convinced on all this, but, um, and, uh, it, it allows for, uh, more sustainability during fuel shortage because you would have propane and gas-powered vehicles, cause I wouldn't consider doing the whole fleet. But, um, so there, there's that. And then, um, I've been reading on it and, and I think you can save some money too, but I'm not sure about that. So, um, my process would be to look into this further, uh, maybe do an audit of our fleet and see what it would cost. There's federal money, um, that's available. Then these people will, can write the grants and help you get the money, um, from the government to. help you get the money, um, from the government to do the conversions. And so I'm just, I just thought I should bring it up. I, I mean, I was interested in it. I'm really interested in lowering emissions. I'd like to be part of that if it makes sense and it makes dollars too. And, uh, I, I think anybody that doesn't think all the vehicles in America that are blowing out fumes isn't a problem, then they should go home, drive in a garage, shut the door, wait about 15 minutes and give me a call. And I'd say they'll be coughing the whole time they're talking to them.
For liability purposes, the town of Ellisville does not agree with that.
I said 15 minutes. I didn't say five hours.
I wish we could have at least that part out.
So anyway, I knew that would elicit some, yes, don't do it. But, but my point is, um, I thought it might be worth looking at and I didn't know if you guys would be interested or not. I'm bringing it to you. I'm not making a suggestion, um, but I bet you would cough. I mean, I mean, you know that emissions are a problem. Um, I'm, uh, you know, I'm not trying to save the world, but I would like to save a little piece of it. And so, uh, anyway, that's, I just wanted to talk about it, put it out there. Maybe you can call me, ask me questions about it. If you're not interested, fine. Um, that's it.
Well, I guess I'll chime in real quick because I think I'm the only one up here who's ever driven a power, propane-powered van or squad car. And it wasn't all that fun.
Is that right?
No. No, the performance is pretty similar, but the gas mileage was not. Um, likewise, it was pretty dangerous to fill one up. If you made a mistake, you got burned. And it was pretty easy to make a mistake from the cold. And so it wasn't a heat burn, it was a cold burn. Um, it wasn't simple to attach. It wasn't simple. And I'm, I'm hoping they made a bunch of technological improvements, but even with gasoline-powered vehicles right now, the problem is not the vehicle, the problem is getting the chip to even get the vehicle made. So I can only assume that these would be even more problematic for the next couple of years.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know all that. And, and like I said, I, I brought it up to get these kind of comments.
I mean, I think, I think you're right. I think EV is eventually gonna be the way you go. It's just how you get the electric into the battery is gonna make the issue. But propane was, I'll just be blunt, dirty, nasty, dangerous and didn't give you any performance improvements. And if you went any besides your local area, you didn't have the ability to recharge.
Right.
Because all the adapters weren't the same.
Yeah, and, and they do, um, work on that where, you know, they've already contacted Farrell Gas about be, becoming a distributor.
Sure.
So they'd have a station and so, but, but.
And I do know Paragon has a Tesla for their, their police car.
Mm-hmm.
And they're redoing it, like it's getting another one or something like that. They're really happy with it.
If you only work for eight hours, that's great. But then you gotta charge it for eight hours before you work again.
What town were you talking about?
Paragon.
No.
I thought it was Paragon. Fargersville, okay, Fargersville.
It can't be Paragon.
Um, no, if you have a fast charger, they can do it 30 minutes.
Fargersville has 14.
And that's only four.
Yeah, the ones over by Marsh. But 80% is considered full charge. They don't, everything.
Should drive, not talk pretty difficult.
The truck trucker told me they were have, have 14.
Which is right.
Well, just for the record, I drive a Silverado.
What, what if we get the ones that go on cooking oil and they go around smelling like McDonald's french fries?
Those are called diesels.
And then we go back to Jeff's thing that we have no place to dispose the, for grease traps, so.
I have one more recommendation. Let's move on to log cabin.
I agree.
That's me.
All right, Denise.
Um, I received a notice to, that I could send a letter of intent to apply for a grant application if it's approved. And when we did the next level trails grant, um, the log cabin, well, back up a minute, the Richland Senior Housing has offered the log cabin to the town. So when I did the next level trails grant, the intent is for the log cabin to be an enhancement for the trail. And we were going to put it where the old train depot, um, was originally located when you'd come off of the trail at Main Street. Um, but that's in a floodway, so we'd have to get DNR approval and whatever conditions they would require. So then I got to thinking and talked to Mike and back in that corner, the trail turns east to start heading that way down towards senior citizens. And I thought that'd be a nice location for it. We're gonna have a trailhead and a restroom and a park and eventually a dog park up here. So I didn't want it to get too crowded up this way. And I have contacted Smithville, um, about some Wi-Fi along the trail for cameras. So it would be secure, I believe, back there. So I just wanted a little guidance from you about if you're okay with that, for me to proceed with it. It's a preservation grant. There's no match on behalf of the town.
How much would it cost to do something like that, to move the cabin?
Um, I've called a place a couple of times and they haven't got back to me yet, so I don't know.
Would the town be on the hook for the relocation or would that be part of the grant?
I would write it as part of the grant. I don't know.
Who knows what they will.
Would be left out.
Right.
Because to me, that's part of the preservation.
Right.
To move it to a location.
You think the cabin would even hold up to be moved? I mean.
Yeah, we talked about it, Jimmy and Mike and I, a few months ago. Jimmy thinks there's some joists underneath that needs some work, but then, um, I was gonna get some coats from builders to fix it. And then it was Mike or Jimmy said they thought the moving company would be the one that would want to repair it.
If you'll call Habitat for Humanity, they move a house every year and they've got good connections with the various transport companies and they've had a lot of experience with it. Give me a minute and I'll think of the gentleman's name. He's a super nice guy, good to work with, uh, but they've got a tremendous amount of experience moving those.
Okay.
In the early 60s, it was dismantled out of Green County and brought up here and rebuilt in 1966. So it's, it's been a fixture of Ellisville through the cesspool continual and, uh, second graders have come down here for years and gone, gone through it as a special day away from school, so.
When was it actually built?
When it was.
Mid to late 1800s.
Wow.
It was well over 100 years old when Ellisville got it.
So that's not an original Ellisville cabin?
No.
I've lived here all my life and I thought it was.
Well.
So you just busted my bubbles.
Sorry.
Burn the damn thing. I don't want anymore.
If I have to be disassembled, if you want it, especially if you're gonna take the chimney with it, it's gonna have to be disassembled and put back together. There's three or four logs that have to be replaced on that west end that are rotten.
Yeah, I was by it not too long ago and it really looked in disrepair, so.
The whole back porch needs to be taken off. That was a festival attraction, if you remember, the, the girls did their little skits back there on the.
I wondered about that when I was looking at that. Why, I wondered why that was put on.
Yeah, that was, that was built for that, for the girls.
It was for the old medicine show.
Medicine show, yeah.
There's famous people was in it.
Your mom was in that one.
I think she was.
Yeah. Boo Medicine Show. Keep it boo. That's right. Yeah, Jeff and Mike's mom was in that, Denise Dennison and, uh.
Kay.
Kay, yeah, Kay Hudson, yeah.
So what do you need from us, Denise?
Just your consensus if you're okay with it being located back in that corner.
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
I say ship it back to Martinsville or wherever it came from.
All right.
Green, Green County.
I can't believe that. I really can't. I thought that, exactly.
Moving on.
I'm gonna go home and.
Had a coal, had a coal mine underneath it, so.
Moving on to privileges of.
Before I go with what I want, I just want to tell you that my son's Eagle project was total inventory in history of the log cabin for insurance purposes and records. So that may be around somewhere. If not, I probably have a copy. Um, I'm here because of the chamber board. We are sponsoring the Canada's Forum breakfast in the morning and hope that we see some people there from the town council. I hope you can attend. We look forward to getting enlightened and informed for the upcoming elections. Thank you.
Supervisor comments?
I'd like to go first.
Five minutes.
I'm gonna start a timer, Mike.
Well, uh, first of all, I'd like to apologize. Uh, I meant to put on the agenda, uh, we have, I need approval for a new hire. We had a resignation in utilities department, department, and so we need a new labor one. Uh, I've talked to a person, uh, we interviewed him, Nathaniel Bryce Douglas is his name. Uh, he has a DSL operator's license for water, which is interesting. And he also has a CDL, uh, so he can, uh, drive our dump trucks. Uh, he has worked for street department utilities and he has stormwater, um, experience. He can run street sweepers. He's been on leaving crews. He knows how to plow. He's put street signs up. He's installed water and sewer lines. He'd make a perfect, um, a perfect labor for us. So, uh, his, uh, range of pay is 2365 to 2414. I would like to make it a lateral move and, and pay him 2414 right off the bat. And so I would like permission to hire this person.
Would you repeat his name?
Nathaniel Bryce Douglas. He goes by Bryce Douglas.
Council action on this or discussion?
I'll make a motion to hire Bryce Douglas as a labor one at the specified rate.
2414.
2414.
14.
Yep.
Second.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Dan Swacard?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. One other item. Uh, I just want to let, uh, the board know that, uh, I am asking for a quote from M.E. Simpson Company. Uh, they do water audits. Basically, they're a leak detecting, detecting, um, uh, group out of Valparaiso. And they worked for us in 2014. At that time, we had a full survey of our system. We have about, eh, I think, then we had 105 miles of pipe and now we have 120 miles of pipe maybe. Um, and we, at that time, we had 24, we, we went from 10% or lower water loss to 24%. In a normal system in Indiana, I.D.M. and I.U.R.C., they recognize anything under 15% as acceptable. If you're below 10%, it's excellent. I mean, there's always water loss. Uh, so our water loss in the last eight or 10 months at least has creeped up to 22%. And it happened pretty quick. We found one, uh, major leak oh, six, seven weeks ago. And we thought that would correct the problem, but it doesn't look like it's going to. We're waiting for one more, uh, water loss report for this month and then we'll probably want to pull the trigger. So I just wanted to let you know that, um, I'm asking for a quote, probably enter into a contract that Darla will see. And I, it'll be a, for a service and it could cost us, uh, last time we paid, uh, just shy of $41,000 for it. Now, if they perform like they did the last time, at the very least, we'll save $7,000 to $9,000 a month once they do the audit and we bring our water loss down. Because they can find half a gallon a minute leaks and they can find 100 gallon a minute leaks. And the last time they worked for us, uh, they found six to eight major, um, main breaks that they were going in creeks. We didn't know. We have good pressure here, nobody ever knows. And then we found probably 30 small leaks. I mean, some of them are gushers, but some of them were just pinholes and we know they can do the work. So anyway, long story short, I think we need them and we'll probably could, I mean, even if we pay, I'm sure it's gonna be more than $41,000 this time, uh, but, uh, you know, our payback's seven months. I just wanted to let you know that I'm working on that and it's gonna be money spent, but it's, we have, we have to do it.
Do you have the money?
Pardon? We do have the money.
Like to ask you that.
Yes, we do have the money. It's a sack.
All right, Jimmy?
Yeah, there's some good news. We had two of our officers complete the I.L.A. training Friday evening graduation with, uh, one of them honors, uh, so we were very happy with that. One has to complete a perf examination. That was today and we'll know the results late this week or early next week. So, uh, but we're, we're moving forward. We'll, uh, have two fill-ins, not fill-ins, we'll have, replace, we've had vacancies now for six months to a year that would have been short at least two, sometimes three people. So we're tickled to death with that. So that's all I have. Thank you.
I have one thing to mention. The plant commission on, uh, September 1st, uh, the envisioned Ellisville, uh, people will be meeting with the plant commission and, uh, walk through that process and hopefully it'll answer some questions that seem to be needed answered. And so anybody that might want to set in on that, just wanted to let you know.
AM?
Okay.
Sorry.
Jeff?
Uh, next meeting, we took advertised for sealed bids on a UV unit. We weren't be able to open them tonight because we didn't get into the paper soon enough. So next meeting, we'll be talking about that. Uh, also, I have three bids for, uh, asphalting the drive out there. You guys should have a copy of that already. I mailed it, or I emailed it to you months ago. Uh, if you'd like for me to re-mail it to you, I will. Um, we'll be talking about that next meeting as well and have that on the agenda. And I have some, also some painting quotes to do, some painting on the interior, um, stuff at the plant and then on some exterior metal piping and stuff as well. So those are three things that'll be first on the rehab of the wastewater plant. But we'll be on the next, uh, meeting's agenda.
Yeah. Catherine, do you have any questions?
Denise? Yes, I do. I just wanted to let you know the next level trail grant officially kicked off on August 11th. It's when we met with, um, the design and engineer. And so everything's in the works to get going with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Sandy, do you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Council comments and everything before our executive session?
Yeah, real quickly, um, I think, Mike, you may push this out to somebody else. Can we get some traffic counts and data on first and Ritter and second Ritter? Particularly first and Ritter's a concern about potentially making that a four-way stop because of line of sight issues that are occurring.
Actually, don't interrupt, but we may have traffic counts on there because Kip was doing a traffic count for speeders. So Mike, circle with him and see if the, uh, if he had one at the traffic count when I asked him to.
I never really did that.
Okay.
Mr. Easton?
What's that? Yes.
Yeah. Kip, Kip was got a traffic count.
That's what I'm saying, so it makes speed, saves some time.
Sure. Again, what's been brought up to me a couple of times and having witnessed it a couple of times and through no fault of their own, so I'm gonna say that ahead of time, when Seven Oaks is lining up to drop kids off, it's creating some issues and that makes line of sight even worse at that intersection. I'm clear it's been that way for probably 40 years, but the environment around there has changed. So maybe we need to look if you guys can kind of put your heads together and see what you think about a four-way stop there and maybe even potentially that next intersection for the exact same reason. You know, going what would be west on Ritter.
First weather's kind of tricky.
It is. Particularly as weather closes in, it's gonna be worse, so.
Either that or we build a roundabout. Just kidding, just kidding.
We'll see. Never mind, I'll let that go.
All right. With that being said, let's adjourn.